All this meeting is ordered. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warhaman, regular meeting of council, Monday, October 28th. And I call this meeting's order. And they don't have any announcements. Does anyone around the table have any announcements? Hearing none, we'll move down to approval of the agenda. Motion, please. Counselor Philip Chuck?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the agenda for this Monday, October 28th, 2019, regular meeting of council.
A seconder. Counselor Beck? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor? Okay, approval for minutes, please. Counselor Beck?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that the minutes from the October 15th, 2019, regular meeting of council be adopted as read.
Okay, do we have a seconder for that? Counselor Jones, is there further discussion? All in favor? Moving down to administration reports, starting with city clerk.
Hi. So today I have brought to you guys the 2019-16, a bylaw to repeal certain bylaws. That would be recommendations to do three readings on that at this meeting. There are just a couple bylaws that we found that the dates of the contracts have expired. So that's the first thing. Second part is we have another bylaw, which amends our procedure bylaw, and that's bylaw 2019-17. My recommendation for this one would be to do just the first reading at this regular meeting of council, because it is one that has to have public notice, so it's in the paper for two weeks. And then my third item today is the 2020 council meeting calendar. Originally, I was going to ask council to adopt it, but after looking at the procedure bylaw, we should probably have that passed, so we'll just have it for information purposes today.
Okay, so let's start with our bylaw 2019-16. Do we have a motion for first reading? Counselor Jones?
I made the motion of bylaw 2019-17, a bylaw to amend by law 2018-2.
What were... Bylaw 2019-16?
That should be his dash sixteen, actually.
Sorry, I made the motion that bylaw 2019-16, a bylaw to amend by law 2018-2, known as the procedure bylaw, be read a first time. The amendments in this bylaw will change the agenda distribution dates to council administration, as well as the dates the agenda will be published publicly. It also amends the order of business at meetings.
I think we need to go back.
I think we do, too.
Yeah. I think you've jumped ahead. You've jumped ahead, Brian.
That was... That's the wrong motion there.
Yeah, we need just the first reading for 2019-16.
Which is the repeal bylaw?
Which is repealing 2016-.
On our copies here.
Oh, okay.
It shows up as the same for both.
Okay. If you read it on the iPad... Oh, no, that one's the same, too.
It's down a little further. On the paper copy, it's the one Brian just read the motion. It's one, two, three down from that.
Well, let's go... If you read it off the iPad, it's 2016, repeal certain bylaw for the first time.
No, he did not.
Today, it's tough for me to read it off.
Does someone else want to make that motion, please?
Okay, is this the one to repeal?
Yes, 2019-16.
Okay. So that bylaw 2019-16, a bylaw to repeal certain bylaws, be read... Whoa!
For the first time.
For the first time?
That's it.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a seconder for that? Counselor Philip Chuck? Is there discussion there? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion to have second. Counselor Philip Chuck?
I'd like to make the motion that bylaw 2019-16 be read a second time.
Seconder. Counselor Beck? Any comments? All in favor? And to have three readings? Counselor Beck?
Yeah, I'd like to motion that bylaw 2019-16 be given all three readings at this regular meeting of council.
Okay, can I have a motion, please? I mean, a seconder, please. Counselor Philip Chuck, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? And third and final reading, Counselor Philip Chuck?
I'd like to make the motion that bylaw 2019-16, a bylaw to repeal certain bylaws, be read a third time and now be adopted and signed and sealed by the mayor and city clerk.
Seconder. Counselor Jones, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, now, Counselor Jones, would you like to make the motion for the next bylaw, the procedure bylaw?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2019-17, a bylaw to amend by law 2018-2, known as the procedure bylaw, be read a first time. The amendments in this bylaw will change the agenda distribution dates to council administration, as well as the dates the agenda will be published publicly. It also amends the order of business at meetings.
Okay. A seconder for that. Counselor Tulley, is there any discussion there? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, a motion for our council meeting calendar? Don't read that.
We'll do that after.
And a motion to file administration reports. That was quick. Counselor Beck?
Yes, I'd like to motion to file the October 28th, 2019 administration report as presented.
Seconder. Counselor Tulley, all in favor? Okay, moving down to council reports, starting with mine. I think most of it is just for your information. There's no resolutions in this report. Is there any questions?
I did have a question. So this is about Project Ribbon? So I'm like, with it is written there, is it only agribi... Is it only agro business that Project Ribbon is for? Or, you know, because like with this year, I thought that that was for, you know, say, any of the trita, I mean, that's being done outside of Saskatoon.
I think that's the... They're looking at... The type of projects they're looking at right now are agri. So will it spread out to something else that you could... So... But for right now, this is what they're working on.
Okay. Also, in the upcoming events, I have a question. Do we have anything scheduled for a budget meeting between now and the end of the year?
Not... Nope.
Nope?
No, we haven't anything scheduled yet.
We will... Amanda is on vacation when she gets back from Nashville.
Nope. And then just one thing that I noticed actually late Saturday noon is, put your note there on the... Yeah, there's the Brian King Center?
Oh, yeah. Well, it's not at the Brian King Center. Everybody, it's at the Legend Center.
The Legends Day.
Oh, Remembrance Day.
Yes. And be there probably before 10:30. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Janelle?
So the week before Thanksgiving, we finished our FCC food drive for hunger. We ended up raising 1,480 pounds of food and provided 579 meals to Warhaman's Food Bank. This Thursday, we're doing our We Scare Hunger food drive, so instead of trick-or-treating, we'll be going door-to-door asking for non-perishable food donations. And then we are working to get all schools in Warhaman to participate in our spirit days and food drives. And then we have started our first Christmas fundraiser. It will be our clothing drive that we've started organizing.
Okay. So questions? Does anybody have any questions? I know I have a couple. So how are you guys going about trying to get all the schools to work together?
Well, me and Karen Jeet are kind of the head of that, so we haven't... We have a rough plan on how we're going to, but we haven't started it quite yet.
And your Remembrance Day ceremony would be Tuesday? Is it the Tuesday or the Wednesday?
It's the Wednesday, the sixth.
It's the Wednesday, the sixth?
Yeah, I looked it up, yeah.
And congratulations on the food drive. That's excellent. Good work. Anything else for anybody else around the table? Okay, thank you, Janelle. Okay, so who's giving the report on the conference? Okay, Gary?
Yep. Well, it's in front of you. If there's any questions, as you can see, it was a quite extensive conference with many sessions. Each one of those, we just gave a line on or we would have had a whole book there. It was two long days, like right from 8:30 in the morning till 5:00, and lots of speakers, lots of entertainment, lots of very qualified speakers, too. Like, I mean, the people that were talking were really well-educated from across Canada, some visiting from the States, but it was... You really got a good flavor from many different vantage points. And I know that you gave us a chance to discuss a lot of the conference, too. With Chitewans, really, they were planning on only doing it three years, and then this year was the extra. They were already talking about next year, though, because of, I think, the energy. There's 780 people at this. So it was a big conference with high-end speakers and the youth, university youth. A lot of them did... They had a form, questions and answers with the form with youth, very well-spoken kids, too, like just spoke both languages, like spoke Cree and English, and very good leaders coming. So exciting, exciting stuff, definitely.
Kendall, is there anything to add?
No, he said it all. It's good.
Okay, well, thank you for the report. We have a motion there to file reports. Who wants to make that one?
I will.
Counselor Jones?
Make the motion to file, file council report.
Okay. Seconder for that? Counselor Shram, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, council on table. We'll start with Counselor Beck.
Yes, so since last council meeting, I've been involved in three events. First one being the household hazardous waste day. So like there again, that was another popular day here for, you know, for our community. At the last council meeting that I had seen, we had 430 vehicles come through. So there, I mean, it was certainly great to see the community uptake on that program, and it still proves, you know, to be popular and seems to be growing in numbers. So, yeah, well, this year, we basically had, you know, let's say, two actual collection stations, and it, you know, our setup there seemed to work out quite well. So certainly a nice change here for this year. So that there was great. So I'd also like to recognize all of the volunteers that, you know, that certainly came up for that, you know, for that particular event and that kind of thing. So... Last week, I did the Northwest Regional Tour with Jean-Marc Nadel, especially when I was here on Monday afternoon, and we ended up visiting 30 communities in those five days. So, yeah, so we made it out to see quite a few counselors, quite a few mayors, and all of the C.A.B.O.s. So it was certainly very insightful for the Northwest Region as to some of the challenges out there and whatnot, and seems like a lot of the challenges that we face around this table are certainly common out there. But there's very unique items, you know, from each of those communities. So it was great to see, you know, to have those, you know, let's say, kind of raised in profile and see what we can do about it. Certainly, like the bylaw, you know, let's say, court, you know, issues and things like that are certainly top of mind for many of those communities out there. So, yes, so that was a very, very good event. And on the weekend, I was a part of the Repair Cafe. So, you know, so that was basically put on in recognition of Waste Reduction Week. And with that, members from the community could basically bring in, you know, let's say, any items that they had around home that needed repair. So, yeah, so we got certainly some things through there. So like everything from stitching up clothing and, you know, zippers and buttons and that kind of thing, right on through to electronics coming through. So we had some TVs and some vacuums and things like that. So, yeah, so it was, you know, certainly great. Hopefully, hopefully, the uptake on that in future years is certainly there. But I think it certainly could be something that, you know, that does prove to be popular.
So were they able to fix everything, or...?
Not all of the items. No, this year, you know, like there again, you know, like the people that had kind of come, you know, to actually repair, you know, they're getting like, kind of testy items. This year, look, we had a coffee pot come in, and it actually needed like a new aluminum pipe, right? Because like the pipe had actually burst, and we can't really, you know, solder that together, or, let's say, weld that. So, you know, so like, there were a few things that at least then we could itemize that part and, let's say, refer them, you know, to what the actual problem was and give them some resources to, you know, let's say, in terms of how to actually have those items fixed up.
So they take that item back home with them, though, right?
Yeah, yeah. So we would do that there.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that was good. And, yeah, that's...
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jones?
On October 22nd, we had the Fall AGM for the Legends Golf Course. Actually, about 25 members there, but, you know, compared to the Spring AGM and just listened to the feedback afterwards, very, very positive report. Financially, the club's in a much better spot than they were last year, looking like... So end of September, bottom line, $107,000, so in a position where we can make payment back to the newly negotiated lease terms with KH, very sorry, loan terms with KH. Lots of good comments from the membership that, you know, even though there has been a lot of attention on the costs of the course, that the playability and the actual, the shape of the course itself is still in really good shape. Notice comments about the service from the staff. So overall, management and the board, I think they're doing a great job. And it's very evident in the results. It's fun to see, you know, it was a very engaged board management at the planning session in the spring and the afterthoughts on really trying to smooth out costs and smooth out revenue. So nail down costs like the water agreement where they can, but also look at costs in the kitchen and the front end, in conjunction with really being aggressive, trying to get more tournaments, that, you know, recognizing that membership was willing to give up some of their times for memberships or for tournaments, because it gives you some certainty on revenue. You know, all that stuff is working, and though sacrificing the playability or the value of that golf course there. So I think just Davidson and his team and the board are doing a really good job of managing that golf course on behalf of this community. It's really good to see, so...
Any new board members?
There is one. I thought you were going to ask it. I just couldn't remember his name. He was a younger guy, though. So that was interesting, and there was a little bit of kidding around about that at the meeting, but he's a teacher in town here, and I can't recall, I can't remember his name, but...
Interesting.
But, yeah, so one.
Counselor Tulley?
I don't think I have a whole lot. Just to report back that I attended the WOBE event on the 19th, spent a little time there on the Saturday morning, and prior to that just did some certainly at the pancake breakfast. And outside of that, one thing to report coming up is the SAMA Urban Advisory Committee. It's going to be Tuesday, November 19th, in Regina, which I will be attending.
And you don't need a resolution, because you're already appointed, that can be...
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Shram?
I don't have much, just what's already been said, hazardous waste, and WOBE, and the one, the report we already gave.
Richidway.
Richidway, yes. Just, my name is spelt wrong, so if you could just correct that, that would be appreciated, my last name. So I don't know who that other one is, but...
Add another one to the list.
Counselor Philip Chuck?
I just have a couple of questions, and that is, as far as our, some of our places of construction, are we using bins to collect waste? Because I'm seeing a bit of waste by some of the construction sites, and just wondering if they're just being followed up on, because I think we require contractors to have a waste bin, and if that could be looked at, that would be appreciated. The other thing is, in our physician recruitment, and I know it's coming up, I just have a question with that, and that is, are the requests for those interest-free loans up to $50,000, or are they just $50,000? Just my question, if you have that.
That's a good question.
So that is up to $50,000.
Okay, then my next follow-up thing is in the coming up, in the application, there's no place in the application that says how much it is. So I'm wondering if that could be looked at when we get to it.
Do we want to wait till we get to it?
Yeah, we can get to it. It's just rather...
If we're going to have further discussion about it, we'll wait till we get to it.
And that is all I have.
Counselor Philip Chuck?
Thanks. First of all, I'd like to ask for a request for a motion to go to the Ignite Business Summit in Warhaman, if somebody is making a motion for me to go. That's on Thursday, November 7th. It's all day.
Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Beck?
Yeah, so I'd like to make the motion for Counselor Gary Philip Chuck to attend the Prairie Sky Chamber of Commerce Ignite Excellence Business Summit on Thursday, November 7th, 2019, at a cost of $89.25.
Seconder. Counselor Shram, any further discussion? All in favor? And to that, Dawn or Aaron, Gary's going to take my place, my registration, and then we will contact Jamie to see if I can just go for the one, because I have an afternoon meeting I cannot attend. I have to attend, so... So just, we'll talk about that after.
Okay, and some of the ones I already mentioned, WOBE, I just have spent the night with, Friday night with Counselor Beck, had a chance to go and visit KH, too, a bit, and Saturday morning with the breakfast, and then I went around to each booth, too, and had a chance to talk. And there's no doubt, there's struggles out there, especially in retail, like I'm noticing that along the way, and that was part of the reason of getting involved a little bit more and understanding some of the challenges out there. Warhaman's not the only place with some of those challenges. So it's, but it's hearing, hearing from the people that were there, all glad to be in Warhaman, all glad that they were there, able to represent at WOBE, but just, I thought I'd point that out as I had a chance to go around. The waste, the recycling day, just that and the backyard cleanup are the two things that I hear the most that people appreciate when they talk about, like, they thank you for it, they, you know, and also the roads being cleaned when we have days like this, of course. But those are the things you hear about over and over again, that they just go, they can't believe that you can continue something that you were doing at 3,000 people with 12,000 people, and that it happens so smoothly all the time. And it's something now that they're putting stuff away and have bins and then bring it to us. So very good program and glad that, seeing all the volunteers there, and our, you know, CEO there was leading the charge there of getting in the back, jumping the back of trucks and pulling stuff down, like, it was amazing. It was good to see. But it's also seeing Rochelle's son there, Ryan, and seeing some of the youth there. It'd be nice to get a few more kids, my own included, but it'd be, like, that's also nice to see that they were there helping out, because that's a good way to help out our community. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. So moving down to correspondence, we have four items of correspondence. Does someone want to make a motion to file them? Counselor Hendel-Shram?
I've moved that the correspondence from the 2022 Saskatchewan Winter Games Hosting Committee and the Saskatchewan Council on Aging have been received by council on October 28th, 2019.
Okay, seconder for that. Counselor Jones, is there further discussion?
So that one's interesting, I guess. What's the next steps in us and being involved in submitting requests of interest there?
Well, the letters went to Paul, too.
Yeah.
And so I guess we'll wait for him to come back to us and make a recommendation.
Next meeting, or...
Yeah. Maybe you can go to the...
Advisory Board, yeah.
It's gone in the past.
We might be better suited for the summer one than the winter one, but I, Paul will give that review.
Any other comments?
No, it was very interesting, and I think a feather in the gap that they're approaching the community like this, see, I just...
Is something like this big enough for us, and is there a possibility to co-host with another community, especially when we talk about using different arenas and so forth? You know, Warhaman, Martinsville, Winter Games might do us both good and also bring exposure to the region.
Well, perhaps our CEO can join his manager's meeting tomorrow, maybe just pass some of these comments on to our recreation manager and see where they go.
For sure.
Anything else? Okay. Did I call a motion for that? All in favor? Okay, so under other reports, we have here in front of us the PRRC committee minutes. Does someone want to make a motion there? Counselor Philip Chuck?
I'll make the motion that a council approves the funding in the amount of $50,000 to the Warhaman Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee to fund their approved application.
A seconder. Counselor Shram? Now, just any discussion there?
Speaking specifically to the application? Or are you talking to the...
Why don't we do the motion, and we can vote?
Yeah, you know, so, you know, certainly with this year, the Warhaman Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee did look at the application. We did have some robust discussion on the applications that we did have received, and this one here did, you know, did certainly make it through. So, yeah, we are asking for council's support to fund this at the full $50,000, you know, dollar amount. We did actually have discussions over, you know, whether or not we would do less and, you know, and whatnot. I will say that we did have a discussion as to ways to change up our application procedure going forward. So like there again, this is one of the first applications there that we did receive. So we have had this in queue for a little over nine months, and, you know, like there again, we felt that it wasn't worth, let's say, sending back at this particular time. This one here would make it through, but any subsequent applications would look a little different.
Okay. Any other comments?
I don't, from my previous comments, I don't have any problem with this. I'm just, I'm, I was just asking the question, because there is no amount on the application, then I'm not sure whether it is... I, from the motion, I know what it is, but there's nothing on the paper that says what it is.
I think going forward, that change will be made, right?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor? Richidway, is there anything else you wanted to add with that move?
Yes, you know, certainly with this year, we had our AGM the same night. So like as you can see, we do have a list of corporate directors there, so those are, you know, certainly listed along with the positions. We, you know, so, you know, like, we are getting really good communication to, you know, to and from the community representatives there. So, yeah, like, you know, like this, this committee has made quite a few changes in the past year, and it is working very, very well. You know, as for the, you know, for the minutes for the regular meeting, I will note that we had one resignation from the board, and that was due to moving out of province, and that has been replaced, you know, so that position there was replaced by Nicole Fourth. was replaced by Nicole Fourth, and we also included Jerry Lanavitts, because we had both, both applications as, as interested members. I have contacted both of them, and they are both willing to, you know, to be present at our next meeting in February, so. So yeah, you know, I guess that's all that I would say about that at this particular moment in time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving down to city accounts, motion, please? Counselor Schramm?
I asked that the council approve the city accounts, it's presented by checks numbered 21144-21286 for the total amount of $496,216.66. And the payroll vouchers numbered 9727-9794 in the amount of $91,268.11 for October 28th, 2019.
Do we have a seconder for that? Counselor Beck, any discussion, comments, questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. And a motion to move into camera? Counselor Schramm, seconder? Counselor Jones, all in favor? Okay, thank you.